All the city councils still order since at seven thirty, I think that council member Martinez will be joining us, or I thought when I talked with him today that that would be the case. But we have a quorum with council member Dominguez comes our bear pro Tim McBarren and council members Schultz present. So with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the do I say the menu? Okay, motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? There is a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. And that includes the city council minutes from September third and the July and August sewer reports reported for September. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying, did you have?
Oh, no, no, I just noticed. Never mind.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. We are now to item number four reports. And first on the list is city engineer Leo Fordham.
Okay, a couple of things going on. Well, number two integration is finally going through. I'm not positive that they're done with it, but Danny, excuse me. Austin called me and asked if I had talked to them because he hadn't heard from him in about a week and this was Monday and then he's like, oh, they just showed up. So I don't know if they finished or anything like that. They definitely had been working on it. Columbus Street sidewalk, same thing. Jay Simon has been asking us for some control points and things like that. So he hasn't given me a date. I'm gonna start, but it does look like it's really close. And then the last one is we're working hard on the CIP and the water and sewer rate study and how those two know together. And Lee and I talked today and we decided that next Friday we'll have a meeting and kind of focus in on that. Closing that getting that CIP and the water rates ready to so sometime after that we'll be able to present to the council. That's all I had.
Okay, I did mention to the council last week that some of the things that needed repaired in the electrical building should be looked at and notorious well number two is there. And they have to work around, or I think there's some recommendation that the office area be cleared out of there too. So.
Is that something we want us to look at?
No, no, I'm just mentioning it based on the fact that you brought it up.
No problem.
I had encouraged council members to stop by and look at some of the things that needed to be kept up that weren't kept up there. That's just one more thing I think to look at the what would need to change with office.
And the council should know too. We had talked early on in our study about moving that office.
Yeah.
But so there's been just those discussions have gone on in the past.
Yeah. All right, we have a number of reports that are in the packet. We have the main report on water, the water treatment. And we have Craig's report and we have Ally's report. I might mention that buried in Ally's report is a little gem that I'm going to become a grandfather again. So that's kind of nice to see in that report, but lots of information.
Did she surprise you by putting it?
Council member. At the end of the day, she goes, oh, by the way, I'm pregnant. Yes, but lots of good information about Ben Book Week and other things going on in the library. So let me check and see if there are any questions, concerns on the part of council members. Ah.
I was just curious under the the water and sewer report. One of the line items towards the the last third, it says we have been in touch with one twenty water about the wet service line. What is the one twenty water?
I can I can answer that.
Okay.
So that is the third party that the city is contracted with in order to assist in the the lead location for the DNR compliance of student year October sixteen. So today I know they did have a training with one twenty water to go over those steps. They just wanted to make sure we had everything in place for that reporting. So that's outside of what Craig Craig is the the wastewater treatment. This is residential homes identifying the the lead.
And this is on the website where and we're encouraging people to fill out the survey. The danger with lead, I mean, I don't know, it was always believed that President George Herbert Walker Bush and his wife Barbara got Graves' disease because of the lead pipes in the vice presidential residents. I mean, this is a serious thing and we as council should be encouraging everyone to fill out that survey.
And it's mandated by the Department of Natural Resources.
Right. Okay, committee reports. I'm not aware of committees that have met.
I would just wanna make one comment that our city clerk's evaluation isn't done. That's one council.
Yes. Yeah, that's right. We are. Okay. Next item, was there were there any other committee reports or things that needed to be brought up?
Oh, shout out to Jerry for passing his
Yes.
water certification.
There's the one that I was.
Or waste waste waters. I don't remember what it said, but I was like, yes. Oh, yes.
Okay.
I would ask if there's any anything that the supervisors would like us to know.
Oh, and in the process of we'd have our border screen. Basically went down and we sent it in. Yeah, and for the price of what it was going to cost basically to repair. We decided to just go out and get some points on getting a new screen. So I've got one from Lakeside currently. And I'm still waiting on a couple more gotten instead giving some points on that. And what can see from there.
Mr. Mayor of Lynn, we're ready. We do have just on with upwards that we'd be able to quickly.
Is this a good time to do that?
I was gonna recommend that we do that.
Okay. Let's do it.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's wonderful to see you all. Sorry, I'm not there in person. But really exciting to give you a quick update on the pilot program. So what I'd love to do is tell you some quick numbers about the impact so far and then switch over to the future of the potential program upcoming. So we've actually just celebrated our one year anniversary of having the program live. So thank you again. This is a huge amazing what it's done so far. So there's been four thousand six hundred and seventy four families that have signed up for the USAR program across the nation, which comprises about just under seven thousand children. Within the actual prioritized region of those four states, twenty eight point five percent of all USAR service members signed up and received care, which was huge accomplishment. You know, USAR was really surprised by how many families actually came in and used this. And within West Liberties region, we actually have impacted one hundred and eighty six families and two hundred and seventy eight children. Sixty percent of individuals had no prior childcare arrangements before joining this program. So you can really go to see the true value that they're feeling where sixty percent of them actually had no option before this. Not only on the family and children's side, but over three hundred childcare providers have actually expanded their hours to offer weekend care. So these providers before the program did not and were not open. And so they have expanded their hours to support military service members. So which is a huge accomplishment. Before it was only about twenty four point two percent of providers were offering childcare on the weekends or non-traditional hours in the prioritized region, which it's now at seventy five point eight. So this is massive. Now, switching over to our Army National Guard program that went live, what was that about four months ago? We have over one thousand eight hundred and twenty seven families that have already signed up and they have created a waiting list of families now. We've already gone over the max amount of slots. So it's an exciting thing that has happened already. And up next, I wanted to kind of quickly touch on the potential program that we're looking to expand right away. So in Campbell Simons, which is in Eglin, Florida, there is a base which has Army Special Forces. Now, there has been an extreme need for childcare. The community has really cried out for how bad the childcare is there that Army Special Forces, the Secretary of Army is actually planning to build a childcare development center. But it's going to take seven years to do so. And they need a solution right away. These are the families that are a lot of times being deployed to some really scary places and need immediate backup in emergency childcare. So the program is slotted to serve a hundred families per month in the region. And we would be able to prioritize those families with immediate deployments and really help to increase the amount of providers that are there offering non-traditional hours, those four AM emergency situations. And that is what we're really hoping to do in this next program and what is up for discussion and really would like to welcome any questions about the past programs and the anticipated results in their second year and also this new program.
And just to let you know, we do have the Army agreement in front of council tonight for their consideration of approval.
Amazing.
Good to hear from you, Jessa.
It's great to hear from you.
Yeah, shout out to poor people in the room who've been very involved with this project, our economic development. In Brooks, Lee Gertz, council member Dominguez and Mayor Phil Tim McBarren. I know that they have worked well with you and hard with you to make this program a reality. So we're very proud of what we're doing here in West Liberty to support this program.
Yes, we are very, very grateful, incredibly grateful. And I can say that for individuals across the entire nation. So it's because of all of you that a lot of families are receiving these support services. So thank you so much.
All right, other questions? And the approval of the report is later in our agenda?
Um, no, I just I just had it so we could submit a report with you and then just hope if you had any questions with regards, that's usually agreement that's coming up. Just to give you an opportunity to to ask them, Jessa, if you have any questions with that. It's very much in line with what we've already established. We can talk about it when we get to that on the agenda, but I again, just wanting to give you time to hear from Jessa. But you know, the information pertaining to our traffic numbers. And I did the copies of those in front of you and also provided them to you in an email. And along with the link for celebrating the hundred year or the first year, hundred years. Wow, first year.
I can't wait for a hundred years.
Question to the city.
Before we know it.
Question to the city clerk, if there was a motion from the council to move that resolution now or to change it in the agenda order, could we do that? So we could do it while Jessa is on the phone with us.
What if we did to do that at the beginning?
We would need to do that. Oh, never mind. Okay. In the order. Okay, thank you.
So Jessa, you're welcome to stay on or we will definitely follow up with you after the meeting and let you know where we're at with the agreement. Okay?
Thank you so much, and please feel free to reach out anytime for any questions. So thank you again for everything and looking forward to hopefully another successful program.
Great.
Thanks again.
Item number five, beer and liquor license, twelve month, class C retail alcohol license for Katamax. Catra Max expiring September twenty thousand twenty four. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the license is approved. Item five B, twelve month, class B retail alcohol license for Antonio Sosa. DAB New York Dollar Store expiring on September nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Is there further discussion? All those will put it to a vote, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next up is item number six, vendor voucher claims. A vendor voucher claim list number one in the amount of six hundred twenty six thousand one hundred forty one dollars and seventy two cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Okay, we'll wait until you get to the right place to ask it.
Oh, perfect. I just had a question about the ambulance. There was like a two thousand dollar charge and it I was wondering what if that was just going for the billing department or what that was because it wasn't really find it. I'm going to be lining them number thirty four. Thirty four, yeah. Because I know what the DMT payment program is, but I didn't know it would be what the charge was for.
Um, so would be my understanding that's the third party that we contract with in order to administer the DMT. And that is for just either September.
I don't have the invoice in front of me, but typically that's the annual cost for the for the administration of it.
We have the annual.
We can get that information for you. Since we don't have it sitting here in front of us, we can get that information and we can send an email to.
If it's if it is annual, don't worry about it. If we check it, it was just the annual, but if it's like Yeah, that's fine.
I was just curious on line item number forty five for the listing of stray from Adalissa. Just curious of the situation that.
So what had happened was there were some individuals who brought the animal into a liberty and from from the rural area and not necessarily in town. It was from the rural area. And then brought the pet to or brought the animal to animal control. Since then, we we are working on some education information to make sure that people understand that our animal control pertains to within the city limits. We do not service the rural area. And that is if individuals even pick up animals in the rural area, they need to take them to Muscatine Connect County Humane Society because we don't, we're not a facility to hold animals. But at this time, the animal was already taken in and so they took the animal to the humane society and it turns out it hasn't shipped. So hopefully you'll be able to kind of follow through and see what we can take to. That's another question that kind of there was an elder ridge charge. I'm trying to find it. But I was wondering, I mean, it's a pretty big charge and I know the folks in Elder Ridge are part of the city, but they do pay for utility services. Is that right?
Okay, correct.
Um, is wind services are specifically benefiting the folks that live in Elder Ridge? Is there some other charge on just their bills or like how does that work? Because what I don't want to see is that we continue to service areas where those folks out there are not paying property taxes to help the city. If that makes sense. So that was my question when I saw this.
Was that a lift station by chance? Because if it was a lift station, that would be considered our property.
Well, normally we are continuing to work through things. We have Vettons who is training. We have that secondary person. So I will make sure that she puts exactly what's on there so that you guys are ready to get, but that would be part of that. Those lift stations come through with that. And that's the one that is located.
That's just basically the utility thing for the lift station that we that is ours.
But can I, if it's okay, I'd like to cover your other question because it is kind of a two part question. So my item twenty one is identifying the power that goes to the lift station. So that's a utility though. Those are recurring. And that's the location of the lift station. The next thing is is that all utilities outside of the city limits have an additional cost. There are higher costs for that service. And again, anyone who because at that time that service was provided without requesting annexation. Now individuals that are requesting utility service have been presented by council leadership that they annex into the community in order to get city services. So when you're when you're no longer in the process of providing utility service outside, but those who currently have them, they pay an additional cost to have those services above what those in the city limits are paying. That's why.
Are there further questions? Twenty two, is there?
Um, no, that was a one time emergency occurrence. It occurred in July.
Are there further questions? With the motion to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The vendor voucher claim list number one is approved. Next up are the public comments and or correspondence. So this is a time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed in the agenda. So if you are interested in making a comment, please state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than two minutes. Are there comments from folks in attendance? Chair records recognizes former mayor, Cliff McBarren.
Thank you. As stated, I'm Cliff McFarren for eleven Thursday. Couple of questions I had regarding the weeds and noxious growth ordinance. And I realize this is again, just comments, so I'll take all answers after the meeting or at a scheduled meeting. Couple concerns that I had, being that I manage the nursing home and my own personal property. We definitions in here are a little lacking if anything else. If I look at section five, seven, four, uniform height specifications. Two things. What are we using as a base for a unit of growth? We're using like a yardstick to the soil base or to the bulk of the of the noxious weed because some of them have mounds. Are we using tape measures or what? So my staff would know what to make sure a measurement gone. So there's no unit there. And how to do it. We've got the eight inches. We've got the fifteen inches and six inches as rural property, the nursing home has a whole set aside acre in the back that has always been prairie and it's mowed twice a year for hay for a farm. Do I need an exemption for that? That's not specified in here and I hate for us to get a penalty for not maintaining that at six inches since it is residentially noted. The other thing was the notification that I was a little nervous about since publishing published I publishing it in the spring, one notice and that was it. I was concerned that myself, businesses, other property owners may not know that they're obviously in violation without that friendly nuisance officer coming up and really giving us a note or knocking on the door saying, hey, like if I have a heart attack or stroke and I'm in the hospital, can't cut to grass. Sorry. There's more, but we'll we'll take that for another time.
We will.
Let's give us more time.
Yeah, I I think that's fine. Yeah. But continue?
Yes, I'm Cliff McFarren from four one. The other, the other issue in these, again, we take these all up later on for discussion is mowing five, seven, seven, mowing in the street. And I totally get this when people blow their grass clippings out. It looks horrible. And they believe that they don't do anything to clean it up. And I get that's the intent. However, somebody that might have an angle to grind on somebody or let's say I go sideways with the nuisance officer. If the nursing home is out mowing, you know, the sides and some of it does get out into the street, naturally we always go, we blow it back with the mower. But if we're off on another part, not going around and doing that nuisance officer drives by, uh huh. I see grass clippings out there or if I'm cutting my front lawn, I go back to get the leaf blower, can you get the battery to work? I'm fiddling around. He comes by, he sees that all, you know, bang, I get a I get a citation or a fine when I'm walking back out to blow the the grass up, you know, when I'm saying there's no time limit. Should there be something specified is you get a day, you get, you know, twenty minutes to do it. Something that would maybe give the residents a little bit more knowledge as to what they could do. I think I know what the intent is. But somebody wants to follow the letter of the law could make life miserable for their neighbors as well as, you know, it could be a vengeance type kind of thing. Again, I I've always appreciated when the city is partnering and educating versus punitive. I work in a world of punitive where we get cited for things without any kind of notification. I don't think as a city we want to go down that street. I think we want to be friendly and try to educate people. I think that's the intent. It's not spelled out here. So if you are nice to me or the nursing home, but you're not nice to my neighbor. My neighbor can say, well, you're a nice thing. You weren't. So it's not really black and white and there's not even there to say that there is some gray. So those are some of the concerns that I had. And I'm assuming that the the nuisance officer does probably have time to be able to go out and do some of those things when you have a nuisance officer. But if he's short on time, I certainly get that. So those are the the concerns that I just wanted to bring up and see if we can get clarification on it. And I think that after either after the meeting or set up the time to come in and discuss.
All right, thank you. Are there other public comments? Are there other public comments?
Yes, I I just like to address that. Just with the the laws that there's discretion. So not every time they put a violation necessarily doesn't have to be enforced. So some of that can be like a see the warning for this one time. And so it's necessarily not every time like they have to do some sort of advice because of the grass in the street, they're necessarily able to say every time they just there's a rare discretion for the nuisance officer. Also handle some of the situations for the nuisance officer.
Are there other public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to city council public comments and or correspondence. Council member Dominguez.
Um, I like to say it's a it's a very.
Yes.
Also, there's financial literacy with you.
Yeah.
I encourage you to sign up for that.
And good attendance is what I hear.
There's also a home buyer class this weekend.
If I might add to what you said about the festival, it was a fantastic event and I was concerned on Sunday morning about waste in the downtown area. And so I went out at eight o'clock in the morning and Francisco Martinez, who I understand is not a relative, even though he shares the same last name with you, was out there with a friend of his, Noel, and two staff members of the puppet theater were out there and had been up quite a bit of time in the night cleaning and picking up. And I felt when we finished that morning. And I felt when we finished that morning, that the downtown looked the cleanest that it has in a long time. So I was very pleased with that kind of work that went both in planning and putting uh, two festivals that were excellent as well as them doing the work to clean up after. Some of them.
Um, first of all, I guess I understand it's happy IT professional day. So uh, thanks to our professional IT guy, um, that, that and to thank the public works for the chip seal, I think it looks really good throughout town. And to, and to thank also the superintendents that go to the length of making the reports that they do, even if it's once a month or um, staggered once every month. I think uh, that's great to help us get a better idea of what happens um, within each department. So I'm, I'm really appreciative of them for doing that. Um, I did receive uh, some questions from some individuals concerning what Mr. McBarren had brought up uh, in regards to the, the nuisance. Um, so I think that's pretty much been addressed. Um. Also, uh, I understand that Adam was really good about filling in the pothole at the post office.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I spoke to the post mistress.
Mm-hmm.
And she was extremely surprised and happy. Um, she had no idea that that had happened until she came in one day and it was filled. Um, but apparently they don't own the building. They, the property owner would either be billed or, yeah, which surprised me that um, the local post, our local post office has to pay for the buildings and grounds of keep, so. Yeah, that surprised me, um. And then the last thing is the short street parking and the traffic. I don't, I know that um, back when it was coming to fruition. We had to have some sign-offs from our city engineer, I assume, in regards to the traffic flow. But I think it might be beneficial for you to go down and take a look at it, Leo, because it is getting really congested down there.
Are you talking about in the, the new condo apartment village area?
I'm talking about all of the condo village apartment area at the end of Short Street because every parking uh, lot or space is filled. And then if they have visitors or a family has more than one vehicle, um, there are two signs on the west side of Short Street that say no parking on this side. But they're not being observed because last weekend, there were cars on both sides of the streets. So it really, you had to thread that narrow area to get down Short Street. And so it was a little frustrating. And so I, I think we, I would like to see how we can look to resolve this. And also I still have people asking me about the speed bumps that we had talked about early on.
We have taken a look at different ideas on Short Street, even, even to try to tie it in, loop it in. And we always thought that would be a good idea, but it was kind of an expensive idea. So let us take a look at that and we can sort of look at that, those. That the uh, part, part of it is to get traffic through, but the other part is to slow traffic down. The speed function.
Yeah, there's an awful lot of vehicles there.
Well, I'd like to answer though, because you are dealing with, so the difference between Short Street and the Boise subdivision. So Short Street is a private, um, a private area. So the city doesn't own the streets within where the condos.
Right.
We only own the, so for Leo to take a look at that, that's not a possibility for the reason why it's a private.
No, I'm just talking about Short Street.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure, I'm just talking about Short Street.
I just want to make sure that we were.
No, I'm not talking about the property owners, but the fact that it is bleeding out into the street and it's causing congestion.
An ambulance can't fit through there with them.
Because, because clearly there are a lot of vehicles parked down there. And I don't know what the solution is, but we need to, I think, readdress it somehow, some way.
I think a conversation with the, with the ownership. Um, and again, having revisit with them about having overflow parking. Um, I know that during the last, this last design, it was my understanding that they were going to address that and establish some more overflow for, for guest parking. And so I, I would go back and um, um, have a conversation and, and just see if, you know, from a future perspective, if they're still looking at that. And as a view of said, um, part of our conversation with that development was of the potential for, you know, a connection from there, from the private property to a city street. But that would mean that the city would have to, you know, seek an easement or expand the public street. So, so again, that was just kind of left where that was at. But I would follow back up with the, um, with the property owner and just talk to them again about um, the, essentially the nuisance of the overflow of, of traffic or parking that's occurring.
Yeah, cause um, or maybe there needs to be more no parking signs or whatever. But there, there was clearly um, traffic parked on both sides of the, the eastern and west side.
Think maybe we should address that too in the CIP, at least something to study or something. Because I think, I think, I think, I think you're gonna, it probably needs more than just going down there and saying, do this, you know what I mean? I think we need to maybe, we've done this one time before, but not, maybe there's more information that's come out now. But maybe there are proposals that we can see if we could get, um, you know, partnership with the owner. Cause I'm certain the owner is getting complaints too, you know what I mean? So maybe we can try to come up with a, a little ground solution.
Alright, thanks, that's all I know.
Absolutely.
Um, that's the data.
Are you doing this weekend? Are you doing this even?
Yeah. I'm just gonna ask, uh, council member nineteen is what I should know, but that's not reports, so.
Yeah.
I wanted to go back to you because I kind of jumped on what you said about the festival and maybe cut off things you were going to say, so I want to make sure you touch the whole.
I think it still sets it on, it sets a um, very good uh, going point for this.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're gonna go to the university, so then it's a big, big venue. It had a huge crowd there. I think it was bigger than last year. Obviously, yeah, bring the kids in the morning and then the vaults in the evenings.
Right.
Yeah, very hot, yeah. Yeah, it worked.
Okay, uh, with that, then we go to the city manager uh, for report and correspondent.
Um, the only thing I have, um, I did receive, I'm, I'm sorry, I did receive public correspondence from um, Miss Lisa Brownie uh, regarding a, a previous weekend event that I heard and not receiving notification. And um, I did follow up with her to explain, um, I would share that with council and that, that was overlooked and will, will continue to, to work on getting notifications out on those events. And I just say, we are uh, public relations to care of this last weekend's events and every, and folks were notified. Um, and she went from door to door individually trying to make face-to-face contact with the business owners too. That is all I have, that's right.
About the city clerk. Okay, alright. We are now then to the item eight, hold this, stop. First is the third and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four zero eight two zero hyphen zero seven. An ordinance amending the code of ordinance for the city of West Liberty by amending provision pertaining to solid waste collection fees. Uh, is there a, a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, it is a roll call vote, the clerk will call the roll.
Can you guess?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McBarren?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes forward zero.
Alright, item number nine, A, uh, under new business, discussion of appropriate action by the city council on a refund request by Daryl Severs uh, for the Wolfshelder. Um, so the process is discussion uh, and then a motion and then consent vote. Um, is there any discussion regarding this? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the refund?
No.
And there's a second, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The I's have it, the refund is approved, item number nine, B. Discussion and appropriate action by the city council on accepting the re- uh, recommendations of appointing Rachel Morrison to fill Vanessa Espinoza's seat on, on the uh, library board until December twenty twenty-five with the opportunity to renew term at that time. Again, discussion, motion and consent vote, is there discussion?
Was Vanessa just going off because her term was off?
No, Vanessa resigned, um, due to, uh, she's too busy.
And then, and so from you, you said, is that a chance to renew, if you come back and you return?
So, um, Rachel, because she is filling a, she can renew her, her seat at the end of her term.
Is there further discussion?
Do you think Rachel would be a great admission to that Allen's board? Probably likes to keep it the first board and I think it's very beneficial to the library.
Yeah, Rachel brings um, business knowledge and things like that, we, we let her some. People like them that are on the board, um, but she's an actual library user.
Further discussion? Is there a motion to approve? Will she approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Let's just see this, consent vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The I's have it, uh, and she has approved to the board. Next up is item nine, C, resolution twenty twenty-four zero nine one seven, item one eight zero. A resolution to approve reimbursement to Jose Gonzalez, um, Economic Development Mansion Grant in the city of West Liberty. Um, and it's a roll call vote, so first off, is there a uh, mo- uh, motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve resolution.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just um, give uh, we lead director Kim Brooks an opportunity um, to share any information that he may have in regards to the reimbursement.
Thanks on behalf of Mr. Gonzalez, thank you very much for permitting that grant application, um, months ago. That work was not an emergency project and it was done very quickly. We came in, we did a good job, there was a building, it's now letting the residential space upstairs and the transpace downstairs. Remember, we possibly mentioned.
There are further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, the endless staff, they broke them and.
Hearing no further discussion, it's a roll call vote, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez?
Yes.
McBarren?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Motion passes forward zero.
And now, item nine, D, resolution twenty twenty-four zero nine one seven hyphen one eight one. A resolution to enter into an agreement for services between the city of West Liberty, Iowa and Upwards on behalf of the USAR um, childcare pilot program, FOB, United States Department of Army. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? Is there discussion?
So I just add again, Mr. Mayor, um, in addition to our existing, uh, West Liberty's uh, partnership with the Army Reserve and the National Guard, we now um, historically bring on uh, the army. And this specific to Fort Novosel in Alabama, this is an aviation unit. Um, and with that said, um, there are some slightly different requirements, but essentially the bigger picture is, is that the city of West Liberty will still continue to be um, the pastor of government entity in order to provide the, the funding to um, additional soldiers. When at that port, and I didn't know it, council member Dominguez, did you have anything to add? Uh, yeah, I just wanted to know how, since we are like paying anyways, we just paid our person anyways and everything. Like how the staff is keeping up, if like, you know, if it's increased the demand, I'm gonna work with it all. Or I've been able to, um, honestly, um, this with the National Guard, this was the first one. Um, to be honest, there was some, a little bit of um, work that just had to be done in order to work through um, the community because the National Guard is with our, um, Army Reserve and Army as far as what they were expectations. And it was a, a work in progress, um, there were some things that still needed to be ironed out, but we were able to resolve them and it was limited work on, um, city's part. Um, I was eager to resolve that through just continually following up with that. Um, prior to the reserve, that's something that's been handled administrative wise through Upwards because they took on additional staffing. And um, again, we'll, we'll find out with this, again, Upwards has, you know, administratively taken on the bigger part of what those needs are and you're just facilitating. But we will continue to update you if it does into a situation where it becomes more than that.
Just adding on to, you know, we think in the near future, there will be a position.
Like was Rachel or local?
Yeah.
So actually, how they do people?
Yeah, I think they have two people and I think both of them are out of the cities. That's wrong, but yeah, they immediately opened positions and, and hired local folks. And they, they're remote positions, so they work with the folks in Los Angeles and, yeah. Um, so that, I think that's what my question was, because this agreement has a lot of responsibility on the city. Um, but I know we have that separate agreement with Upwards. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't gonna add any, anything to y'all. Yeah, correct, so what we would do is that, um, even though it, because it's stating the city as part of the government entity for those requirements and what we currently have now is Upwards provides that reporting. It would be just our job to minister to make sure that those reports and Upwards does a good job of giving us that communication.
Perfect.
So through that partnership, but thank you for asking those recommendations.
Is there further discussion?
I do know that they have, um, set November thirteenth, um, is when they, there is a potential, I believe the date is set for November thirteenth at the Pentagon. Um, and there's been a request for um, uh, representatives of West Liberty. So just gonna be thinking about that and I'll follow up with you um, regarding that information, so. You might as well just give us our, our, our.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz?
Yes.
McBarren?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yeah.
Martinez?
Yeah.
Motion passes forward zero.
We are now to item ten on the agenda, a motion to adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, uh, by nay. Guys have it, we are adjourned.